Ready? And call the meeting to order. Rule call.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Here.
Commissioner Derling.
Here.
Commissioner Flicker.
Here.
Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Sheard.
Here.
Commissioner Ayers.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Thank you.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Did you?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. May I sit down? Okay, now it's the time for our new commissioners to be appointed.
So we will take our oath of office. If I could have the four commissioners that were recently appointed, either reappointed or appointed, come up and spread out up front. I'm going to come up and administer the oath of office.
Down there?
Yes.
Wonderful. I bring smiles. One, two, three.
All right, I'm going to ask you to repeat after, raise your right hand and repeat after me. So I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Oroville Planning Commission to the best of my ability. Thank you. Welcome, and we're excited to have you join us.
Welcome, welcome. It's been a long time since we've had a full commission.
So commissioners, in front of you, you will find two oaths of office. One is not in a blue casing, which I need back from you, and the other one is in a blue frame, which will be yours to take home. And so if you could sign them both, and then I will collect them from you.
Jackie, do you know if we have anybody outside, or?
We don't, we're not doing public comment that way.
Oh.
So they can either go in through Zoom, or they can message us ahead of time.
But do we know if there's anybody in the room?
No.
I'm sorry.
We don't have any public attendees.
Okay.
The public, their options for attending right now, because we're in a lockdown,
Okay, okay.
is either by Zoom with the information on the agenda, or they can send comments and ahead of the meeting. They can also watch live on our YouTube streaming as well.
Okay, so how do I know, or should I know, or do I care who is available? For example, I'm supposed to mention that anybody that wants to comment on non-agenda items.
So right now, we're having a little technical difficulties with our computer system, and so I can see who's online on our Zoom system, but I'm not able to stream it to your guys' screens like I normally do. And so during those items, if you'll just ask me if there's an applicant, or if there's a public member that wants to speak, I can kind of direct that conversation by seeing who's on my screen.
Okay, for example, on this, I'll mention about the non-agenda items, I'll look to you to see if there's anyone that wants to speak.
Yes.
And do that each time.
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready? Hey. This is an opportunity for anyone who wants to speak on a non-agenda item. And if they want to bring up something and discuss it with the commissioner, it's understood that the commissioner cannot take any action on this item being discussed, but that was the opportunity for anyone to do that.
Are there any public members on Zoom that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Mr. Chairperson, there is, there are no public speakers on this item.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing process. I'll open the public hearing. Staff will make a presentation. Will that be, okay, staff will make the presentation on the item. The hearing is opened for public comment. We'll listen to the applicant and for example, the, the staff, when they make the presentation, when he's finished, any of the commissioners have a question of staff, that's the time to ask the question. Then the applicant will have an opportunity for making their presentation. Is the applicant, are they going to be here?
Mr. Chairperson, I have two individuals for the public hearing that are applicants that will be speaking on this item.
Okay, with your mask, I have a hard time understanding you, so.
Mr. Chairperson, there are two individuals on the Zoom meeting that will be speaking as applicants on this item.
Okay. Okay, and then after the item is fully discussed, the public comment time is closed, and at that time, the commissioners can debate amongst themselves, and that, and that debate eventually leads to a motion and a second. And then we take the vote. And those who have to use equipment up here to vote, just come right up and, and do your voting. And and we'll take it to the next item. Okay. First item on the agenda is amendment to use permit UP 9816 for conversion of an existing billboard into a digital display sign. Staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Welcome to our new commission members. Connor Musler, planning intern. This item is an amendment to use permit UP 98-16 for the conversion of an existing billboard into a digital display sign. This billboard outdoor advertising structure is located on the west end of the property identified as APN 013-300-120, which is along Olive Highway between Lower Wyandotte Road and Foothill Boulevard, across from the Avery's Oil Change. Currently, this billboard was approved by the Planning Commission on September 25, 1998, for the placement of a 12-foot by 24-foot double-sided off-premise outdoor advertising structure. On September 22, 2014, the Oroville Planning Commission approved an amendment to that use permit to allow for the conversion of the static billboard into a double-sided digital display sign. That conversion never occurred, and the use permit approval has since expired. STAT Outdoor Advertising has once again applied for an amendment to that use permit for the conversion to a double-sided digital display sign. The existing billboard has a width of 24 feet and a height of 12 feet, total sign area of 288 square feet per face. The total height of the sign is 27 feet. Per city code, no digital display sign shall exceed a maximum area of 300 square feet and a maximum height of 40 feet. At the DRC, it was noted that the existing sign structure may need to be replaced with a new structure to support the weight. If that is needed, the applicant would like to increase the height to 35 feet and the sign area to 300 feet, 300 feet, square feet per side. The commission can allow that. Jason Rip with STAT Outdoor Advertising submitted a written communication, which you guys all have a copy of, requesting that increase if that were to happen. One thing to note, the new city sign code, it's not yet in effect, but it will go before the city council sometime in January, establishes new regulations for digital display signs specifically relating to area, height, and spacing. Per the new sign regulations, the maximum sign area can be increased to 450 square feet on each face and 85 feet in height if the digital display sign is within 150 feet of State Route 70 right-of-way. However, because this project is not within the State Route 70 right-of-way, the city code keeps it remaining at 300 square feet with a maximum height of 40 feet. As Jackie mentioned, we have two people from STAT online if they wish to comment on anything.
Yes, thank you and good evening. This is Greg Reddiker from STAT Outdoor Advertising. I don't know if the commission wanted to ask any questions before we move to the public comment portion of the hearing, or we're happy to do whatever is the commission's desire.
All right, staff, is that, may I finish with your presentation?
I just have one more thing to note. Condition number 18 in the resolution. This was one of the original conditions of the project back in 2014, was that the applicant shall provide a pole cover for the sign, which would be similar in design to the pole cover for the digital display sign approved under use permit number 12-06, which is on Grand Avenue facing Highway 70. At the DRC, this was discussed and recommended that condition 18 be changed to when the property is developed, the applicant shall provide a pole cover for the sign, which is complimentary in style to the development. So this proposed condition would defer a, a pole cover for the sign until that property is developed. At that time, when it is developed, a pole cover will be provided that complements that, that development.
Do you have any questions of staff? Just make sure you understand that you should have received a letter from, from STAT Advertising. Does everybody have their copy? Okay, thank you. Open the public hearing for the applicant to make their presentation.
Yes, thank you again, and good evening, members of the commission and city staff. My name is Greg Reddiker with STAT Outdoor Advertising. I just wanted to thank the commission for all the work at the public hearings done previously in this year for the code amendments. This particular project is being run by my colleague Jason Rip, so I'm going to leave it to him. I'm going to be here for moral support, and Jason, take it away.
Thank you, Greg. First off, I just want to thank staff for the time and their effort on this application. We really do appreciate that. And greatly appreciate that we were able to get this on the agenda before the end of the year. So thank you very much for the promptness. And Connor did a great job kind of introducing the project and kind of aligning the framework of what we're looking to do here. STAT's very excited at the prospect of having a digital display sign along this portion of Olive Highway in Oroville. We feel like it's going to be a, a great benefit to the local business community, and it's going to increase our digital footprint in the city of Oroville, where we can direct or have target an audience that's in that Olive Highway area. It will be in addition to the two signs that we have on 70 and the sign that we have on Orodon Boulevard. As Greg said, we're, you know, we're just here to participate and answer any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Chairperson, that is the only two applicants on there.
I can't understand you.
Mr. Chairperson, that is the, the two applicants have spoke, so now if anyone would like to ask them any questions, they're available.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant? Mike, go ahead.
According to this, we were originally at 288 square feet per face. So basically what they want to do, and correct me on this, staff, is, is we want to increase this, this is part, this is part of this. Oh, sorry. This is part of this motion here, correct? Is to increase this to 300 feet per side and to raise it to 35 feet. And what was the original height?
So the original height is 27 feet?
27 feet. There it is. Yep. Okay.
So originally, as the staff report's written, it was just going to be a replacement, like-for-like, exact same square footage for each sign face, same height. But STAT Outdoor Advertising had mentioned that the, the structure, it might need to be replaced to be able to structurally support a heavier digital display sign face. Should that be the case, they're requesting that the height be increased to 35 feet and the sign area be increased to 300 square feet.
Okay. But originally, it was 288 and 27?
Yes.
Did they not think that they needed a better base at that point?
That would be a good question for the applicants.
Okay. Did you not think that the base would support 288 square feet and 27 feet in height? Just because you're moving it up and add another eight feet and increasing it by, what, 12 more square feet per side, you'd need a bigger base?
Right, so we're actually not sure until we have our engineer take a look at the existing structure and if it will accommodate the additional weight of two digital display signs.
Okay, back to my original, my, my original question was, at the original 288 square feet and the original height of 27, will the base support your sign?
We're, we're actually not sure if that's the case. Again, we're going to have to have our engineer take a look at the existing structure to see if it can be retrofitted to accommodate for the, for the additional weight. And, and that's honestly what we want, that, that would be the ideal situation. However, if it turns out that the, the retrofitting of the existing structure is going to be very expensive, sometimes it's more economical to install a, a brand-new fabricated sign structure. And at that point, we would like the structure to be 35 feet overall.
Yeah, and just a minor item of clarification. Building codes change every three years in the state of California, and the state keeps on ratcheting up the requirements. So something which was perfectly adequate 20 years ago may be inadequate today. So it has to be evaluated under current codes and current engineering practices. And I believe, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong here, but what we're asking for is if we do need to replace the structure, looking at the option of potentially going up to 35 feet. It may very well be that we replace the structure and stay at 27 foot overall and 288 feet per face. We're just asking for a little bit of flexibility in the case that we do need to order a new structure. Could we make it a little bit better in terms of visibility?
All right, yes, Greg, that is correct. We are, we are requesting to have the option to raise it to 35 feet with, with a new structure.
And how long, how long will it take to be inspected to see if the, if the structure will support the original approved sign?
Well, if, if the use permit is approved, we will immediately start contacting our engineer to move forward with the building permit process. So I imagine we would know within the next few weeks.
Mike, I might be able to help clarify. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
This is Wes.
Yeah, hi, Wes Irvin. I'm the planning manager. I'm in quarantine for the moment, so I'm on by Zoom. Mike, we are asking, because of the late information that was provided after the staff report was posted, for the Planning Commission to approve the alternative, should that become necessary after the engineering work is done.
Got it. All right, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Any other questions? You got one? Go ahead. It's on.
Oh. Tell me about this pole cover.
So the pole cover would disguise the existing gray steel pole that's right there. So for example, the welcome to Oroville sign as you come on in from, on 70, that has a, like a stucco look facade on it. That would just cover the pole from the ground level to the, the sign area. So you don't see that, that just steel pole.
And so they want to wait until the property is developed to put that up?
Yes, so there's pretty much three options, I believe, that you could condition this to be is, one, not require that pole cover, two, require it to be installed now, or three, wait until that property is developed to require that pole cover. The reason why it's included in the conditions of approval is because that was one of the original conditions of approval for the previous use permit amendment. And that obviously never happened, so I had included this for discussion with the commission as to what their desire may be.
So is that property slated to be developed?
As far as we know, not at this time.
So there's no time limit for the
No.
pole cover, other than when the property is developed?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you got a question?
Yeah, when we met at the, is it CD?
DRC.
DRC meeting, we discussed that, because the other one was stucco, or the building that it's built maybe is going to be in stacked rock, or it's going to be, we just don't know what the building behind it is going to be looking like. And that's why they kind of decided just to wait, or we agreed upon, we thought it would be a good idea to add this, so we'd wait until we see what it is. I mean, some buildings are wood, you know, or some are stucco, or some are stacked rock. And the idea of going up was when the buildings are developed, when something is built, then it's going to be like sitting almost too low, because there's a building right there. That's why the idea would, it would go up higher, if anything, so you could see over the buildings.
Any other questions? I have a couple, I think. What, what's the maximum height allowed? Is it 35 feet?
40 feet.
40 feet.
Is it 40 feet? So they're not asking for the 40 feet, just the 35 feet, right?
I believe it's just the 35.
Okay. I think that's, that's all I had. The, the application. I guess it fits well enough. I, I was just kind of bothered that the, the wordage of the app, application itself wasn't matching up with what was being proposed. But the way it's been explained by staff, I understand now that, especially the whole purpose of the DRC is to deal with these kind of things and make those kind of changes, so I don't have a problem there. That's all. Any other questions? Any questions, additional questions of the applicant? Hearing done, we'll close the, the hearing and move the meeting to discussion amongst the planning commissioners.
Mr. Chairperson, I have, the one letter that you've received is the only public comment I received. I have not received any other written comments, and there is nobody here from the public. There are no public speakers on this item.
I'm having a hard time understanding you.
Sorry.
Okay. Discussion amongst the commissioners. Do we have any decisions or discussions? Anybody have a problem with the 35 feet? I don't, yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is it automatically assumed that the use permit is approved if they meet the requirements? Or is the use permit determined by the vote here today?
The use permit will be approved, assuming it's approved, it would be approved tonight. And then the conditions, some of them will allow the staff to make decisions in the future. For example, the covering of the pole.
Okay, so if they meet all the requirements, like it looks like they have, it is not assumed that they get a yes vote?
That's correct.
Okay, that was what I wanted to understand.
The use permit has to be approved by this body.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we approve the old, already approved one, right? Which is 27 feet at 288. If we approve that, then how do we approve or not approve the amendment? So how do we go about that? It, say I, I approve the old UP 89-16, but not the amendment of the 89-16. How does that work? Do I have to approve all of it together, or can I separate it?
Well, you would approve all of it together.
What if I still want it at 288? And 27?
Then you would approve it as amended, but to remain at the two, the size of 288 square feet.
Got it, got it, got it. Thank you. I was a little confused how this all worked.
Because it would still be amended, because it's also extending.
Because it, it ran out of its time limit, correct?
No, not the time limit, but you're still, there, you're still amending it because now it's a digital display as opposed to a static.
Correct. Okay, all right.
So just, just for whoever's making a motion, we would, we would also need to say something about the pole cover and the height?
Yes.
And would we need to say anything about the square foot of the sign, or?
If you want the square footage to increase, and if you want the height to be able to increase as an option, you would want to include that in your motion, because it's not in the original resolution.
Right. But everything that they're requesting is less than our sign code allows, correct?
Correct.
And we've gone through that pretty deep.
Yeah, we did. For how many months?
Years?
Back, back to the development of the property, there's no development, right? None on the books for the property. And what is the zone on that property? Commercial?
Quarter or mixed use.
Okay, okay, all right.
Let's say it's five years before anyone decides to build on there. Does the staff have a ticker file of some kind where this issue would come up automatically to new staff, or so that the pole covering issue isn't forgotten?
It's revisited.
In our Trackett system, what we can do is place a note within our Trackett file that if any development is to be had on this parcel, that that pole covering would have to be installed at that time. So there is a way, yes.
Are there any further questions or discussion?
I have one. So could we flag it that say, if it's not developed and give a date, five years, then they have to put a cover up?
Yeah. That could be a
Given the, you know, because it might be happening next year, and we just don't know.
Yeah.
We, you know, but if it's, it's been, what, 20 years now, and it still has a pole? You know?
If you wanted, if the commissioners wanted to do that, I would assume that would be included in the motion by whoever makes the motion. So what, there's three items, then it would be included?
There's a lot. There's a lot of additions.
Yeah, there's, that's what's so confusing about this, is there's a lot of different moving parts here.
That's all right. The staff will help us through the motion, I'm sure, so.
Yes.
All right, then. Oh, you got another question? That's it?
Yes. I'm just want to understand, what do you all think? You all have a lot more experience than me. What is the benefit to the highway, to the city of Oroville, by increasing the signs to be loud and demanding? I mean, I, I know you all know the difference between the static lit and then the very bright, demanding signs. And is that the direction that we want that highway to go? that we want that highway to go? I mean, is that something that businesses love to be near? I know it's mixed use. Do residences like to be near that? Personally, I don't find them um something that fits into a town that is being improved.
Have you ever discussed this in our five years of discussion?
We we have, um, in our sign code, uh, we only allow a certain amount of digital displays, and I believe they're only, uh, they have to be at least a mile apart, I believe.
One point two five, I think.
Yeah, so so if this goes in here, it'll take out
How many other signs?
All of highway. All of highway will probably be off limits after this.
All? Okay, I guess I would kind of want to know. Okay, so there, is there a benefit to the one besides Stott Advertisings benefit? Is there a benefit just to the the view of the city?
I I I don't know. We've, it's it's the code that we've established.
There are pros and cons that come with the digital displays. The pros are that more of our local businesses have the opportunity to display or advertise their business as opposed to one for the duration that they have um with the their agreement with Stott Outdoors. So the, again, there are pros and cons. Um, there's also, you're saying bright, but there's also lumen restrictions that are placed on these signs. There's also the duration restrictions that are placed on these signs. So they have to shut off at midnight, and they can't turn back on until five AM. So there are, like I said, multiple pros and cons, but I believe the biggest pro is that it has the opportunity for multiple businesses within our city to advertise.
Is it only for Oroville's businesses to advertise on?
No.
So it's similar to the one on Highway seventy?
Correct. Mr. Chairperson, uh, Greg from Stott Outdoor would like to respond to this question if he's able. Greg, it looks like you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there are actually a whole bunch of benefits that these signs uh bring to the community. In addition to providing an affordable uh medium for local businesses to advertise their goods and services to motorists in the area, uh, directly results in increased revenues for those businesses, which translates into increased tax revenues for the city. In addition, Stott, uh, we are members of this community. We've been based in Butte County since nineteen forty-nine when we were founded. Uh, we are involved in all the communities in Butte County. Uh, we want to be uh good corporate citizens and uh good partners with all the jurisdictions that we do operate in. We do operate a public service announcement uh program. You may have seen uh ads recently for COVID and social distancing and things like that. We also run them for local organizations on a space-available uh basis. So there is, you know, a public benefit there as well. And um, you know, it's really uh an opportunity for uh the local business community to thrive. So I hope that answers your question. And if you have any follow-up questions, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Thank you.
I just think it still begs the overall question, i- is it beneficial to that stretch of highway and to the residents of the city of Oroville if you were to ask them? Which I understand that's not really what this is about, but I just think it's important to kind of keep that in perspective. That's not what we're, we just kind of look at the black and white. Does it meet the law? Does it? That's what I wondered. Code? But then there is the reason for the use permit is so that it does come before some type of um guidance.
Anything else from anyone? Uh, you ready for a motion? Somebody want to take a crack at it?
I'll take a crack.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion on UP nine eight one six to the uh square footage to be two eighty-eight and the height to be twenty-seven feet. And for a covering, hold on one second. For a pole covering to be completed in five years? Whether the the property's um developed or not? Is there anything I'm missing, Wyatt?
Adopt the resolution.
Are you also adopting Resolution twenty twenty twenty-five and approving the conditions of approval and the categorical exemption?
To make it a luminous sign?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes.
So I understand your motion is that uh you're not allowing the thirty-five-foot height?
Correct.
Only twenty, twenty-seven feet?
Twenty-seven feet, two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, uh, luminous sign, and a cover in no
Okay.
no longer than five years.
So I want to be clear that that uh you're basically not granting the thirty-five-foot height or the
I just did.
Yeah, okay.
I'm making motion to be at twenty-seven feet, two eighty-eight, five years for a pole cover and a luminous sign.
Luminous is not digital?
Or what whatever it is. Is it digital? How do you, what do you want?
Digital display.
Digital.
Digital display, okay.
Do we have a second? I don't hear a second. The motion is dropped. We have another motion.
You want to? You want me to do it, or you want to do it? Nope, you're off. There you go.
Uh, I'll make a motion uh that we adopt the categorical exemption um and adopt the recommended findings uh for amendment to use permit number UP ninety-eight dash sixteen, and adopt Resolution number P twenty twenty dash twenty-five um and approve the conditions of approval. Um, also defer the pole cover until the property is developed um and allow the uh the signage um to
Three hundred square feet.
To uh confirm to our current sign code. Is that?
Yeah, so they can go bigger and better. I'll second that.
Yeah, it, anything that confirms to our current sign code.
For pole until development, increase to current sign.
Current sign code is what, forty-five feet?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty feet, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay, just to make sure I understand the amendment part of it, um, the first amendment to the conditions of approval is that the pole cover um will just need to be finalized by the time the property is developed and that the sign confirmed to the current sign code.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we want to come up. Those are coming up here to vote. We're ready to vote.
And do they turn on it?
It's
Mine's not on.
If you tap it, it should
Huh? Oh, there we go. Anybody want to change their vote?
One, one more.
Huh?
Oh, it's done now. All the votes weren't cast.
No, I'm just, I want to make sure no one wants to change anything.
The motion carries with five yeses and two nos.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to uh item number two. It's a tentative parcel map twenty-eight dash oh three. Staff?
Our meeting is now Matt will be on Zoom.
Matt is on Zoom and can start the presentation.
Oh, thank you, uh, members of the planning commission. Good evening. Congratulations to the new members. What we have here is an existing commercial development. Uh, one building is currently not occupied. I believe it used to be a dollar-type store, and the other used to be a grocery store and is now just a blank slab. The existing parcel is approximately six and a third acres. What they're proposing is to uh keep the existing building on a parcel of about one point two five acres, and then demolish the existing slab and build a new facility on the remaining five and an eighth acre section. Because all of the uh infrastructure is essentially in, there aren't a lot of conditions of approval for this parcel map. Notably, they um, we're going to make sure that each parcel is fully compliant with ADA and stand on its own in that regard. Um, we want them to bring their parking lot shade, shade trees uh more back into uh compliance. A lot of them have died, so a lot of those will be replaced. Um, and then at time of development for the new building, they will be uh fully compliant with new storm drain regulations. So parcel map, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions with staff?
Um, earlier we had talked about a shared property agreement. Did you, do we ever find out if there was one or was going to be one?
Yes, I had a chance to look at that. If you look, if you have a chance to look at the map in front of you, underwear says parcel two, five point one, two acres, you'll see the note that references the uh parking agreement. It's, they refer to it as access and egress and that sort of thing. But I went in and double-checked the uh title report, and that's the wa- the condition. We all want to make sure it was there, and it is.
Can you tell me again where that's at? Where on the map, you said? Oh, I see it. Never mind. Okay, got it.
Yeah, it's right in front of our face, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't see it.
Find it too, so don't feel bad.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? Staff, that is. Okay, open the hearing. Applicant is available to uh make a presentation?
Mr. Chairperson, there is no one else at this meeting with us at this time.
So we don't have anyone?
Mm-mm.
Okay, well, seeing none, we'll close the hearing. And uh, open to discussion amongst the commissioners. Any questions or issues or?
Do we know uh if there's a business intends to go in in this area or?
In parcel two?
Okay, that's it. Okay.
Yeah, I I see Dawn shaking her head, but I don't know what it is.
I probably should have asked this. Um, with the new building, the underground infrastructure is going to have to be changed quite a bit, or you won't know until the actual building goes in. So they'll have to tear up everything and uh
If I may.
Yep.
I'm just concerned about
All we know right now, the footprint is going to remain essentially the same, but we don't anticipate a lot of changes in the underground infrastructure. It's a parking lot, so there's a lot of opportunity to make any changes that they do need to make.
Okay, I was just concerned about the existing businesses being disrupted uh to be uh, make sure that that's taken care of, that they're not
Yeah.
faced with a year or two.
They have a lot of room to work with. That's a very large parking lot, so I'm sure that they'll be able to make the accommodations.
Okay. No further discussion?
Matter of fact, that there's a lot of room behind those buildings that most people don't realize is there. That would be the perfect place to stage any construction.
Good idea. Any other discussion? Questions? Uh, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended findings for tentative parcel map two zero dash zero three, recommend conditions of approval, and to adopt Resolution number P twenty twenty dash oh three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone wants to change their vote? Nope.
Motion carries with seven yeses and zero nos.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item, or do we have any uh reports or discussions from the director, from staff?
There we go. Good evening, commissioners. Um, again, welcome aboard. We're happy to have you here as part of our commission, our team. Um, you'll see we are formal, yet still very relaxed, so. Um, and we welcome all questions. There's no silly question to be had. Um, it's always good to have open discussion, so thank you. Um, one item of order is our Development Review Committee with Commissioner Sears. Now, um, no longer with our commission, we have Commissioner Flicker as our primary for the Development Review Committee, and I believe it's Commissioner Jenkins is our next up. You cringe.
That's really difficult.
Okay.
One thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah. Okay, so would we like to nominate our next Development Review Committee member? We can have a new member. I know you work out of town as well. It's difficult, so.
I know when I got into it, I think they wanted us to be a little bit, not just new, to understand it.
Right.
But I think we're kind of limited on
That's right.
experience. Carl, you're off.
Do the new commissioners understand what the DRC is? Has it been explained to them?
The Development Review Committee meets and discusses, or meets to discuss and evaluate um discretionary developments, um, applications such as general plan amendments, um, rezonings, tentative parcel maps. Um, they also will review design of new developments uh as well as other site improvements. So it's really just to kind of get that feedback before it comes to planning commission, so um, eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed, basically. They meet once a month. It would be the second Tuesday of the month at one
It was Thursday.
Thursday, I'm sorry, I'm thinking council. Second Thursday of the month.
It's at one thirty.
Mm-hmm, at one thirty, so.
We have another person who wants to volunteer?
Glenn's.
It's, it really gives two commissioners an opportunity to hear
Well, I'm still on it, right?
Huh?
I'm still on it.
Yes, you are.
Oh, I thought you were
No, she moved from second position to
Oh, I thought you were
No, no, I like it.
And it's rotational, so it's for a duration of three months. We do it quarterly, and so each commissioner would move from that primary position off, and that secondary commissioner would move up to that primary position um for three months, and then it rotates quarterly throughout the year.
Has it always been that way?
It's always been that way.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And also, uh, it's a chance for the various departments of the city to provide comments. So our fire department, um
Parks.
engineering, parks and trees, they all provide comments on those projects, and that's where those prom- projects, um, comments are consolidated in it.
What time is it? One?
One thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
I had been on in the past, and it is, it is helpful to be able to ask those other departments and find their input.
Absolutely.
Sometimes it would be nice for the commission to know more about what was discussed in there, like with the Stott. It was nice that you mentioned that you guys had discussed why the sign should be higher and and about the sign wrap.
Yeah.
And it gives some comfort level to the applicant too, to know that there's two commissioners that uh have reviewed it and uh they haven't voted on it, but they understand where those two commissioners are coming from.
Right.
So it's a, it's a good thing for, uh, when I was in my development years, I I loved it. I I loved having uh that opportunity to hear. And sometimes problems would come up. You, the commissioner may have a problem, and it can be discussed there and maybe resolved too.
Correct.
All right, we have our two. You're going to chair it, right?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you have any more?
One more item. Um, just because everybody knows we're in our COVID shutdown for three weeks, the city of Oroville is remaining open. Um, because building is still essential, our building department is open full-time, so we'll be working our full hours, eight AM to five PM Monday through Thursday, and eight AM to noon on Fridays, to keep that essential function moving. So, but our staff is, our non-essential, even though they're still essential to us, our non-essential staff is rotating so that they aren't working in their respective departments at the same time in case there should be an infection. in their respective departments at the same time in case there should be an infection that they don't contamin, or infect the remaining members of their department, so we can still function. So just wanted to clarify that for everybody. We've had a lot of questions recently.
Okay, I just wanted to, uh, inform staff that, uh, uh, my community area of Grand, I live on Evanswood, which is, uh, north of the river.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, was inundated with ash and nobody could figure out what was going on.
Just recently?
Apparently they burnt down all the, or burned up all the piles of, uh, uh, lumber there on the, on the property, uh, at the.
For the Olive Ranch apartments.
Southwest corner and area of Grand and, uh.
Table Mountain.
Table Mountain.
Mm-hmm.
So all that's down now.
Yes.
But that's, I had to go to a doctor's appointment when I drove by there. Now I know where the ash came from. Because we got quite a bit.
Yes.
What was the purpose for that?
The purpose for that is for the Olive Ranch apartments and, Olive Ranch, Olive Grove?
Ranch.
Ranch, that's what I thought. They changed it from Olive Grove to Olive Ranch. And so there will be, I believe, eighty, eighty-two or eighty-seven apartments for the phase one. So they have removed the Olive Orchard and Firestorm has come in this last week and burned the Olive Orchard just to begin the clearing phase. We anticipate receiving the application for that project after the first of the year. So, and that's one of, um, five, um, multifamily development projects that will be coming.
That helps us meet our numbers.
Yes, our RINN numbers.
Yes.
So, that's all I had.
Mr. Chairperson, our planner, uh, Wes, would like to say a few words as well.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, you can't see me, but I can see all of you. And I'd like to echo, uh, everyone else in welcoming all of the new commissioners to our planning commission. Uh, we as staff, Dawn and Connor and myself and Matt and others are all available to you, uh, at your convenience to talk to you about, uh, any issues, how to be a planning commissioner, et cetera. We have materials available. Um, and, uh, we welcome the opportunity to get to know you. Uh, I will be reaching out to the new planning commissioners just to introduce myself in person, uh, when I come back to work. Thank you.
Anything else from staff? We'll close the hearing, we'll close the meeting and adjourn to January twenty-eighth. Thank you. It's great having.